Everyone signed in, if you're not already a member of the club, everyone's signed in. It's your responsibility now. Okay, we'll be using a microphone, my name's Don Heron by the way, I'll be facilitating or moderating, whatever term you want to use. We'll be starting obviously right now at six and finishing at seven thirty, if not earlier, it just depends on the number of questions we get. This is a cliched question but I'll ask, you can all hear me I trust, it's a pretty small place and a small group of people, is that okay? We really weren't sure who was going to show up, how many we'd get, so we have microphones set up, so I'll probably just keep talking like this and the candidates can choose whether they project their voice or use a mic, is that okay? We've done a sound check and they're working. I'd like to firstly formally acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we're on, the Awabikul people, both past and present. And also just the courtesy to the club, Lampton Bowling Club, for hosting this, they provided everything for free. And as you know, the people running this, myself and the rest of the Lampton residents group, we're just an informal residents community group, and we're all about community. And that's why we thought tonight, particularly through Mark Rooker, who owns and runs the Lampton Community Newspaper called The Lampton Local, which comes out the first week, at the start of the first week of every month. Mark's really done a lot of the running around, contacting candidates and things like that, so thank you to Mark. So again, thanks to the club. Thanks to the club and also, not myself, but thanks to our residents group, because it's a voluntary thing. Thank you. The format, now the candidates on Saturday night are planning lease wise, I typed up a short one-page document just for your background, to explain the process that was meant, the candidates were mentioning so you're Saturday or Sunday, just so they were more familiar and comfortable about what's happening tonight. Now I'll explain what's happening to you. It's not all about me, so give me three more minutes and I'll be out of here. The idea is, you'll hear a five and a half minute speech, maximum of five and a half minutes, okay? You can speak less if you like, but you'll have a maximum of five and a half minutes to speak, I guess introduce yourself, put your policies, what you stand for, that's your job, okay? At the five-minute mark, if you are speaking that long, Nicola, one of the volunteers in our residents group, will just hit the little bell and you'll have thirty seconds left, okay? Finishing in five and a half minutes. In terms of democracy, openness, transparency etcetera, the scrutiny about politics within Newcastle has heightened a little bit in the last year or two, so we thought, what's the most democratic way we could do this? So, the people are sitting, in the order they appear on the ballot box, which will be, the ballot paper sorry, which you'll see this Saturday when you vote, assuming you're in this ward. Kath Elliott, she appears at the top of the ballot box, one. Alan, two. Naveka, three. RJ, four. Declan, five. So that'll be the five candidates you'll see, in order top to bottom, on the ballot paper this week. We thought also, and again, at the risk of giving it Mark, great idea, he thought also, if you had them in that order and they spoke in that order, then when you do come to vote, you can hopefully associate with, oh, this person, oh, that was that person, I heard them speak, they sat here, it might help you link who said what and who you want to vote for. Alright, so that'll be the process, they'll speak, we won't have any questions at that point, they'll do their speeches, the five of them, and then after that, I will ask some questions, just for background in case you don't receive the Lampton Local newspaper every month. This was started again by Mark and the idea was promoted and organised through the Lampton Local, and we actually called for the readers, I guess if you like, they had priority, the readers of the Lampton Local had first priority, because we said, can you send your questions to our residents group email address by last Thursday, Friday? So I have a pool of those questions that we received, and that's what I'll be asking the candidates after they've completed their speeches. You will find, I hope, that some of the questions may well be some of the things you want to ask about, because there have been some common questions and themes appearing, so I haven't done a statistical analysis, but I'm pretty sure these questions will pick up some of hopefully your concerns. And after we exhaust those questions, and just by the way, if you have sent questions in, some of them, because they were the same or overlapped, we've had to just summarise them a little bit, so I guess you'll just have to believe that we are a residents group of integrity, okay, and trust us, but if you want to scrutinise, you can see them later. So after those questions are done, then you, assuming we have time, and I plan that we will, up until seven thirty, we can take questions from the floor, obviously ones that haven't already been asked, or if you wanted some clarification perhaps on one of the questions that they've answered previously, and you want a bit more detail. So is that okay? Five speeches, I ask the questions that came in through the email, and then you get to ask your questions. I don't want to sound patronising, so we're all grown-ups, so we will behave as such, respect for everyone here, and perhaps most importantly, respect for yourself in terms of behaviour, and without sounding too heavy, bear in mind too, the club is hosting and it's a favour to us, so they are bound by certain licensing laws, I don't expect you're going to miss the cave like that, but I just need to say that, okay, so we're covered. So the first speaker, as per the ballot paper, is Kath Elliott. Do you want to use a mic, or project?
Thanks very much, lovely to be here and great to see the residents group with so many supporters. I'm quite nervous and I think I've just done a straw poll, we're all pretty nervous, let me tell you, so I'm sure we'll all settle in as the night goes on, but I'm really pleased to be able to have the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. You probably have seen some things about me, and very nice state, this election for me is a referendum on 46.9% rate rise. Whoever wins this election will have the deciding vote on that, and a vote for me will stop the rate grab and a vote for Labor and Greens will guarantee the vote. I made the decision to stand for election when I saw the community's wishes clearly articulated for the middle option. Can you not hear me? Is that better? Yes. I decided to stand for election when I saw the community's wishes, which were clearly articulated for the middle option of thirty-seven and a half percent ignored by Labor and Greens. I got pretty upset about that actually, as a member of the community. And for those councillors who didn't listen to the community's strong message that they're accepting a thirty-seven and a half percent rate rise, and for those councillors who instead ignored the community's wishes and voted for forty-six point nine percent rate rise, which is nearly fifty percent, I think they should be shamed. They gave, you gave them your trust when you elected them, and you require a lot from them, and I think they've let you down, they've let me down as a rate payer. Our newly-elected Lord Mayor, Noor Talin Elms, in her first meeting used her casting vote to make sure it got through, and she didn't run on a rate rise when she got elected, and she didn't have a mandate. Our Lord Mayor's let down the very people that Labor purports to represent, the hard-working and struggling families and the pensioners of this city, who are fed up with cash grabs for their hard-earned dollar and a lack of action. In February last year, councillor Elms actually, with her Labor and Greens colleagues, voted against a mere 1.1% rate rise. At that time, and shortly after that, in April, when the thirty-seven and a half percent rate rise was mooted, she said that we've had all these cuts to services that don't add up to a lot of savings, we've had job losses, I don't think we have enough standing in the community at the moment to jack the rates up this much. Well now she wants to jack them up to forty-six point nine percent. I'm sick of political parties saying one thing and doing another, and I'm sure you are too. My Labor opponent is a good friend of the Lord Mayor, he ran her campaign to get elected. He might tell you tonight that the resolution of the council was only to send a rate rise to Ipart and that it's not set in stone. But let me say this, if Ipart approves this rate rise and Labor is elected in Ward Three, we will all be paying nearly fifty percent more for our rates. He may also tell you that seventy-one percent of people supported a rate rise, but what he won't tell you is that forty-six percent supported the middle option, thirty-six percent supported the highest rate option, but twenty-five percent supported no rate rise at all. So don't be fooled. He may also give you examples that the rate rise will only affect you by a hundred dollars, or that the difference between the middle and the top rate rise is only ten dollars. But in councillors' own documents, the average rate rise will increase by five hundred and four dollars. So if you're the average person, and I know a lot of people in Lampton won't be because of your property values, the average rate is one thousand and seventy-four dollars, that'll increase to one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. People are telling me they can't bear that. Most of you will have just paid your rates since dormant, and simple maths will tell you what fifty percent of your current rates are, so you can do that in your head right now. Don't let Labor pull the wool over your eyes. They may also, he may also talk about the tough decisions that council has made so that they're not in the red. The council was heading for insolvency, but in the past couple of years has introduced efficiencies and clawed a lot of that back. Any tough rate rise decisions made by Labor and the Greens will be felt by you, not the councillors, they'll still get the council allowances. So, you know, Labor and the Greens are committed to taxing you to the highest possible level, I'm not. Labor and the Greens will vote for what the party machine tells them, I won't. I'll vote for you and with your interests in mind. If I'm elected, my first order of business will be to reflect the community's wishes and roll this rate rise back to a preferred option. In fact, I've drafted a decision motion to do just that on Tuesday the twenty-fourth of February, which is next week. So if I'm elected, next week, I'll stop it. Every candidate here will tell you that they'll do things for the community, they'll each say that they support community consultation, community projects and social justice. We all support improved cycleways, parks, playgrounds and pools, we all support those things. There's little difference in our objectives, but there is a difference in delivery. You will already seen that I went out and dealt with the Lampton Police Station asbestos issue for you last week. That wasn't dealt with by the state Liberal MP or the state Labor MP or the council, but I fixed it in two days. I'm an independent, I'm balanced, and I listen to all sides before making decisions and taking actions. I support Lampton, I support the park, the pools, the playgrounds, I support all the things that all these candidates will support, and they're all good people and they all want to do it well for you. So let's not forget this election is tough, I'm not only asking for your vote, but I'm asking you to get on board, stop the rate rise and vote one for Kath Elliott.
Thank you Kath, and again, the second candidate on the ballot paper, Alan Warren, independent, and microphone or not?
Can we, yep, good. So my name's Alan Warren, I'm running as an independent for the upcoming by-election in Ward Three. A little bit about me, I live in New Lampton with my wife and our three boys. I grew up in Mayfield and went to Warratah High, played cricket for West down in the parks behind Epton High. My father's childhood home was where West Hotel is now, and his father's home was also there. My mother's mother also lived in Jesmond, so as you can see, our family has a lot of history in Ward Three. I work in HR for the Country Regional Network, which is a railway. I've worked in rail transport sector for most seventeen years, and I worked my way up from a trainy signaler to a train controller, to a program director, to a, just strategically managing all non-fixed roles in rail corps, to my current position today. In these positions, I manage multiple million-dollar assets, millions of dollars of expenditure and delivered key projects. Keeping in mind in the business world, if you don't deliver on time and in budget, you normally don't have a job, and I can tell you I've never been unemployed. I've developed an industry-best working safety framework and developed national training standards as a member of the Transport Logistics Skills Council, which also has been adopted by Saudi Arabia, Kenya, Malaysia, Chinese and other Australian railways. Whilst working, I studied a certificate three in rail operations, a certificate four in training and assessment, diploma in HR, diploma in NHS, diploma in business, bachelor of arts in, degree in political science and business, and a master in business administration. Whilst some of these qualifications are as relevant as my standing in high school, most of them allow me to make knowledgeable decisions in a timely manner which needs to happen. As a local independent, not tied to other political parties or associated with local lobbyist groups, I promise to deliver, if elected, community-friendly services, world-class events and attractions, and to stop the almost fifty percent rate rise. Community-friendly services such as fenced and shaded activity areas in parks to allow for children to play regardless of elements, in a safe environment. I believe we also should invest in a city cycle programme like Brisbane City to reduce congestion, attract visitors and promote a healthy lifestyle. In relation to world-class events and attractions, Newcastle must be a destination location, and we must fight to attract national and international visitors to, and visitors, visitors and businesses to Newcastle. Questions asked, why don't we have a major sporting event like the Gold Coast, and they've got a few, and we're the same size? And why can't our business be bursting through the CBD? Current situation is simply not good enough. When the world looks at Newcastle, I want them to think Newcastle, open for business, opportunity and fun. Stopping the almost fifty percent rate rise and calling for accountability and set KPIs that have been reviewed by an independent auditor, KPIs must be acceptable service levels, reducing red tape to a minimum and seeking new streams of revenue that do not rely on the community footing the bill. Looking at the breakdown of the almost fifty percent rate rise tax that Labor and the Greens want to introduce, my stats are a little different in tasks, but on average, the effect will be one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars per household. So the median household, according to the Australian, the median household income before tax, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars per week, median mortgage repayment per month, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, actual spendable money after income tax and mortgage payment, five hundred and seventeen dollars. So depending on your house, you'll have to look at school fees, medical bills, power bills, food, swimming lessons, sporting fees, home maintenance. Heavens forbid that you want to take your family to watch the Knights play or go and see that new Disney movie, just not on the cards. If elected, I will make council detail every cent spent through an Anyworks programme, which will be online and tracked as live. I will commit to outcomes and put my political future on it. With this rate rise, the Greens and Labor coalition are asking you to go with our income for over three weeks of the year. In today's climate, what can you afford to go without? If elected, I will vote to freeze any further council or pay rise until I can bring in-line rate rises with Consumer Price Index. It's simply not good enough to ask the hard-working families of Newcastle to continue footing the bill for poor management of the city. My campaign has been fully funded, self-funded, and I refuse donations of any type, and for me, it was important to get out there amongst the people. I've made up cheap t-shirts, so if you've seen me, you can tell that I made them, and I've walked up and down the streets, hills and dirt tracks of our ward, and everyone's calling out for change, they don't like the political machine anymore, and they don't want lobbyists popping in also, they want an honest voice. Unlike other candidates, I live in Ward Three, my family, my friends and neighbours all live in Ward Three, and I will speak for those of Ward Three. If not successful, I will not work with my party and backers to find another ward to run in. For me, this is about long, this isn't about a long political career, it's about fixing our city and doing what's right. I'm Alan Warren, the local independent, and I'm asking for your support, thank you.
Thank you Alan, well, without showing any favour, he did bring that in on time, I think. Well done. The third candidate, as per the ballot paper, Naveka Behram, the Labour and Greens.
Thanks Don.
You're welcome.
Good evening fellow candidates, residents of Ward Three and other visitors here. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the land on which we're meeting is a Wabikul land, and I'd like to pay my respects to elders past and present. And thank you to the Lampton residents group for organising this forum tonight and giving me an opportunity to meet with committee members and let them know what I live for, what I stand for. My name's Naveka Behram and I'm standing for the Ward Three Habitat for the Greens on Saturday. And sorry, I'll be weeding a little bit because I am nervous. So firstly, a little bit about me, I've lived in Ward Three in Newcastle for almost thirty years, in North Lampton, I'm married and I've raised my two daughters here. And through them, I have had association with Jesmond Community Pre-School, Warratah West Primary School and Lampton High School. Both daughters and myself all played netball for many years with Warratah League's Netball Club, and my husband was also involved in coaching the girls' teams. I've been actively involved in my daughter's schooling and sporting activities and had, was involved with many of the committee, been volunteer positions as treasurer and president and community member. I've worked as a social worker up here in Newcastle for thirty years as well, I currently work at Hunterd England Health as a social work manager. Most of the areas I've worked in are aged care and disability and mental health. And now a little bit about what I stand for, so we've elected to Newcastle City Council, these are the things that I stand for. I believe the council should be providing services to the community. In Ward Three, in some places, we have no footpaths at all, some places are quiet here, so this makes it very hard for residents to get around. This is doubly hard for mothers pushing strollers, I've had that problem, children getting to school safely, and impossible for people with walking aids or in wheelchairs. With the Greens, I also support, sorry, I also support providing more cycleways around our city, and cycleways that are separated as much as possible from traffic. We need to ensure that people can safely get around the city and with better paths and more cycleways, these would produce many benefits such as encouraging more exercise for a healthier lifestyle, promoting an alternative to cars and thereby reducing congestion on our roads. Newcastle has a great cycling strategy and action plan, we need to progress this. This is good for everyone, motorists, cyclists and families. I value open green spaces that we have in our local government area, places where people can relax and kids can kick a ball or play on the swings. There are studies that show that people who have access to gardens or parks are healthier than those who don't. And four of the six parks, the council, Newcastle Council's most recent hit list last year were in Ward Three. I don't think residents are aware of that necessarily. Some of these parks are near blocks of public housing and private rentals, where many people have children and no yards of their own. Due to cost-cutting by the previous council, many of our parks have been neglected, and I'll work to ensure that these spaces don't get sold but are kept for the benefit of the community. I believe we need to improve the attractiveness of these parks, keep them maintained, provide quality-in-play equipment, plant more trees and provide seating for picnic areas. We need more for our young people in Ward Three. I will push to return a skateboard park in Jesmond that was removed some time back, that's what the residents are asking for, I've done some door knocking. The Loft was a council-run facility for Newcastle youth, providing specialised activities that were popular with young people. This has also been taken away in recent times, this has to be returned. Council needs to do more for the youth. When looking at council website, there's only one listing under youth, it was a plan written in nineteen ninety-six, that's not good enough. Over recent years, council has moved towards a more secretive style of government, where certain meetings were closed to the public and community forums were curtailed. Last year, the ALP and the Greens agreed to an open government reform package for the Newcastle City Council. This agreement proposes opening up all council meetings, workshops and briefings to the community, except those legally in confidence. It supports the expanding of the number of council committees and invites more community and expert representation on those committees. It also increases opportunities for people to address council and much more. Today, Declan and myself have signed our commitment to continue in this direction towards increasing transparency in your council. Shopping strips, the Greens also support jobs creation in our city, as well as protecting small businesses from large commercial centres. Our shopping strips are the hearts of our community, this is where we support local business, we chat with our neighbours and we create a sense of village with a unique atmosphere. Every time a business closes locally, more people stop going to the local shopping strip and it affects other businesses. If elected, I'll do everything I can to stop the slide towards the loss of these shopping villages, like your Elders Street Village. Newcastle is the second biggest city in New South Wales, and its city centre is expected to accommodate an additional ten thousand jobs and six thousand additional homes in the next two decades, according to council estimates. It has the potential to be a vibrant economic residential and tourist hub, as stated in the urban renewal strategy. I too share this vision of a progressive and vibrant city, meeting a variety of resident needs, and I believe we need to do this by keeping the heavy rail line to ensure we continue to bring people into the city. For the growing numbers of workers and visitors and residents, we also need to limit the height of our buildings. I will work for more infrastructure, not less, maintenance programmes to be rolled forward, retention of our council-owned facilities and assets, and improvements in the cultural, sporting and recreational activities our city offers, and supporting safer and better public and active transport. I want to work towards a city we can all be proud of.
Yes, I'm a coward because I thought if I let it go too much longer, you'd start accusing me of favouritism. No, no, that was fine, thank you. RJ Martin, the fourth person to appear on the ballot paper, RJ, do you want a microphone? I'll leave it with you if you want it anyway.
Thank you all for coming and for my invitation to the event. With a particular mention to our families, that of the candidates, that put up with us during this very stressful period, election topic. Newcastle City Council's current makeup is that of two voting blocs, one to the left, one to the right. Labor currently controls council with their merril casting vote, just as Geoff McLeoy did when he was Lord Mayor for the right. Does it make any sense to vote for an extra councillor who is bound to either the left or the right? Please remember, they will hold the balance of power, eliminating the merril casting vote in most situations. Or does it make sense to vote for someone in the middle, someone like me? Who understands that we are all walking a tightrope across a vast chasm of life? We need to balance with the left and the right, on a tightrope, so we're balancing a middle, or else we will plummet to our doom. I seek to be a swing voter on council, to vote based on the issues at hand, in your best interest, not to vote based on political persuasion, author or voting bloc. Would it be fair to suggest that with the Labor-Greens coalition currently controlling council, that any good ideas of their candidates could have and should have already been implemented? By good ideas, I mean ones that are beneficial for the populace, not just for their political masters. This is especially the case with Labor. Remember, Declan was campaign manager to the mayors of Lake Macquarie and Newcastle and already has their ears. Most of his ideas would have been used by Jody and Noor Talley for their campaigns, including the meaningless slogan, "Fighting for our fair share." Fighting whom and for whose fair share? Labor's elected elite? So perhaps Declan's promises and policies for this by-election are impossible, otherwise they would have been implemented already. Or Labor is blackmailing you with, "Vote how we command, or else you won't get the goodies." Either way, it is not a good thing. Shouldn't our elected representatives represent us all, not just special interest groups? I say that they should. Declan is a favourite to win this election, of course, despite being twenty-two in uni, having a lack of out-of-school life experience, and as he says in a well-rehearsed elevator pitch, his former involvement's with the Greens, before switching to Labor due to the Greens' self-defeating attitude and a lack of probability that he could be an effective agent of change with them. That being said, he is a very smart fellow, politically savvy from his time with the above, as well as student politics and, you know, youth labor, campaign monitor etcetera, and he appears to be generally a nice man outside of politics. I still have not forgotten the bullying and intimidation of my wife and child by Labor under Declan's watch as Jody Harrison's campaign director, including by a state MP and local Labor leader. Some was filmed and uploaded on YouTube if you want to watch. The theme that really sparked me off with local politics involved me cycling home in two thousand and six, and a metre-long, half-metre-wide and several-inch-deep pothole. I crashed and was nearly collected by the car behind me. A week in boring hospital with having parts of my body broken and other parts grated off on the road down to Sineu led me to the conclusion that I ought to do something greater with my life than just working in a so-called regular job and volunteering in the various community service organisations that I was a part of, that I could do a lot more potentially as a statesman. That pothole should never have been allowed to go. That pothole should never have been allowed to grow so big. And, uh, there were no shared paths there, so I couldn't ride, you know, on a footpath or a bike track, whatever you call it, so I was forced to ride on the asphalt. This led me to joining Lake Macquarie City Council's Community Advisory Board. And later I became the executive board member and treasurer of the Place Charles Tenith and Community Centre. This was around eight years of combined experience. Lake Macquarie's council is a far more efficient, uh, council than Newcastle's in many ways, yet both have their problems and similarities. With massive mounting debt, infrastructure and maintenance backlogs and massive special variation rate rises. I very publicly fought against the Lake Macquarie massive special variation rate rise back in two thousand and twelve and spent my own money to do so. I continue to fight against Newcastle's now, but will be more effective if on council. Alan and Kath are claiming to be against this rate rise now, yet actions speak louder than words. I did not sign away tens of millions of dollars of rate payer's money for the Newcastle Art Gallery facelift. Alan and Kath both did on Friday, which disappoints me really. Uh, probably you too. And it contradicts their claim stance on rate rises. The money does have to come from somewhere. Uh, the situation reminds me of the story of a politician going to a pro-abortion rally and stating their belief in a woman's right to choose, then later that day going to an anti-abortion rally and claiming to be for unborn babies' rights to live. Now, the simple fact is, we cannot afford this, uh, gallery revamp when we have massive rate rise applications.
After high school, I entered university and am presently in my honours year studying an engineering and science double degree at Newcastle. It was in my first year at uni that I was appointed to the University Committee on Environmental Sustainability and have actively participated as a member of that committee ever since. Through this committee, I've been involved in developing significant transport upgrades, including the provision of two new bicycle hubs to make cycling more accessible for staff and for students. At the start of my degree, I was awarded a cadetship with Hunt Water and now work there full-time. As part of my role, I work closely with both Dungog and Port Stephens councils and the Department of Planning to prevent pollution from impacting our drinking water supply by overseeing development worth many hundreds of millions of dollars. In recognition of my efforts, I was named Newcastle's Young Citizen of the Year in two thousand and thirteen and was recently named the two thousand and fourteen University of Newcastle World Student of the Year. During this campaign, I've often been asked about my age and the skills which I would bring to council. I hope that my CV will serve to inform you of my past history and achievements and allow you to judge my character. I believe the council should be represented, should be represented by people from across the community, not just thirteen members from the same generation. I will bring a fresh face and new ideas to civic decision-making in Newcastle. In recent weeks, my team and I have spoken to hundreds and thousands of residents, either at the door or on the phone, about local issues that matter to them. It is based on these conversations that I have developed my key priorities for the ward, which are fixing our roads, building footpaths, upgrading our parks and delivering upgrades to Black Bart. It's about protecting and improving local services, such as Lantern Pool, and many of you would have seen the announcement in today's Herald regarding that facility. Uh, local upgrades to, uh, to libraries and community childcare. It's about working to improve transport in Ward Three, such as advocating for the completion of the Newcastle Inner City Bypass, better cycleways and maintaining a railing to the inner city. And it's also about restoring trust and integrity.